Welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. We're going to first start with standing and we'll do a moment of silence. And then we will say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now, first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I like motions for that. Well, did you?
Yes. Paul, can I get a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Paul, thank you.
I'll screen.
I'm trying to make it while.
Ms. Nancy, do we have any public comments?
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can motion to have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, we're happy we have any public comments. I get to do this once a year. Okay, all right, thanks for your patience. Okay, the first item or second item of tonight is going to be a selection for board chair. Do we have any motions entertained?
I'd like to nominate Megan Hendricks.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Will we do a session?
No, you can do discussion or you can ask if there's a measure.
Are there any other motions on the four or board chair? Okay, we got Ms. Hendricks. Others in favor?
Uh, uh, no.
opposed?
No.
Reading hazard. Ms. Hendricks is our new board chair. Okay, at this point, do you all continue or do we turn over?
She can take it.
Okay, Ms. Hendricks.
Okay, do we have any nominations of the next items number three, a bachelor year? Do we have any nominations for a bachelor year? I don't know. Should I give it to them? Is there? Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, zero.
Three, two.
That's three, two, sorry. And number four is appointment of a board secretary. And that is the superintendent and accurate. The few all keys that I have is the superintendent and editor of secretary.
Okay.
Okay, so that's two, so that's.
Okay.
And would anyone have a problem with that or is there anything that?
Someone just needs to make a motion.
Okay. I would nominate Dr. McCollum as to continue to be our board secretary.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Motion carries. Yeah, so. Okay. I can't, I'm reading my paper here. Okay, so five of. Um, number five, consider approval of Alicia Ellis as the treasurer of the Cardinal Public Schools and board treasurer. I would like to nominate Alicia.
You don't have to nominate.
You don't. We just.
Consider approval.
Okay. All those in favor?
Uh.
You've got to get a motion.
Okay, sorry. Um. Do we have?
So.
Do we have a motion?
Uh.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Uh. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Um, stat number six, establish sequence of voting.
I think we've done district.
Is that a lax and local?
Yeah, so what? You don't have to have a one or a reason, so according to your policy, you can do each time. So it could be by district or local.
I can request a local.
The policy says probably it can be by voice vote. They say show me under a red ball.
So essentially just continuing how the policy operates.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that or have a motion or is that just?
On the organizational meeting, it says that you shall establish voting. Establish voting order, I think you have a motion.
Okay, so we're all good with continuing to do it how we've done it?
A policy.
A policy. Maybe it's like a policy of 1.4.
So no vote or motion needed?
Well, I don't know. In the organizational meeting, it says you just to establish vote or I think it's a motion.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to, um, keep the voting for our policy zero, 1.4.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven, consider approval of proposed monthly meeting dates, times and locations.
Okay, so in, um, I believe it's O7A, cannot have stated it to include Mondays. And they're the, I've gone over the dates with our base team and specifically with Ms. Ellis. So if we want to go to Tuesdays, the dates are listed in the first column with the exception, well, today's Tuesday, but with the exception of January 4th, all of them are following on the fourth Tuesday. And until you get to December and to avoid the situation that we had this year where we canceled a regular meeting and then rescheduled it as a special call meeting. Um, that's the second Tuesday if we keep with Mondays, um, which are fine with Ms. Ellis and the base team as well. Fourth Monday, so January 24th is the fourth Monday and so on, those are listed there. Again, the second Monday would be used in December.
Well, I think we switched to the fourth. I never got an answer to that question.
These are based on, most of these due dates coming down to the 31st or the 1st. So it gives Ms. Ellis more time to have, make preparations to make sure that we have things in by KVE. And I hope it will eliminate the need for the multiple meetings that we've been having.
But then the last week, did you have her? Did you have her at that time?
Yeah.
I mean, because that, like, they're a week ahead of us on the meetings for that reason. They've always, they're, they go a week before us. So we've actually always been behind a lot of the other districts.
But if you do it a week before and we're requiring her to have her information in prior to the meeting, then that's really taking it a week up. So by moving it a week back, she's able to have it in that Wednesday before a board meeting. So when you're having due dates of the 31st or the 1st, which most of these are following that.
But if it doesn't pass or more information is needed, then she's in a bind.
Most of these, these are things that you're not necessarily voting on too. Like some of these things are things that she has to have you review.
But if it's a regular meeting, does that?
Yeah. I'll come over on with Ms. Ellis. We can vote for her.
I mean, I'm just saying, if there's questions, which there usually is, then something has to be brought back. If she's in a position then that she's past her due date.
Yeah, we also have some work sessions here that we'll be able, if you want to have work sessions for February, April, September, November, which we could discuss out in those during the.
Is that supposed to be?
No, I put it at the bottom of that document, sir. Because I wasn't sure if you all wanted to do four work sessions out here, which we could have on a different Monday or a different Tuesday. Or you could have like at 5:00 or 5:30 so you had extra time during the same night.
I'll see.
During the drive. During the drive.
On the drive.
Yeah, except the.
On Saturday.
The other items.
Yeah.
You're on 7A.
I'm on 7A.
We'll go to the bottom of the second page.
Does your, there's two columns in it?
Huh?
Does your colleague, does your colleague call up?
The one I printed off earlier today, didn't you? But the one that I can see now has two columns.
Ms. Ellis, do you have anything about the third Monday over the fourth Monday?
I would, if, if they don't want to do the fourth, the third is sufficient. I mean, it could say that. I mean, it would be easier for the fourth on me. It is hard pressed to get our finance stuff done and submitted by the deadline for the third meetings.
That's fine. You do, you, I'm fine with whatever. I'm just saying, as many times as things have to come back or get tabled or whatever, is that going to mess you up? If we're doing the fourth week?
Very rarely do we have to bring something back that has a deadline of the 31st.
That was my original question. If that, if something was to get tabled, then have to be brought back to another meeting.
That would make it, yes, being the fourth.
It's because you said 7A, so three months.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take one out.
I mean, other than that, I don't care. It's whatever everybody wants to do. But that was, that was always the reason I was given from day one is it had to be the third week is because finance and payroll was to make sure that if something ever had to come back.
In my time here, I think we've only had one instance that we had to bring the tentative budget back. Otherwise, it's always been approved that night even with modifications that I might have had to make for the deadline that I've never had to bring back.
And the fourth week gives you more time?
It gives us, it gives finance more time on the deadline of getting our check runs completed and the reports reconciled and everything submitted and then examples of my budgets and staffing and all of that, getting all of that documentation, which is very elaborate in many cases, just more time to get it submitted so that it's uploaded and, um, the year all's reviewed.
So you would be comfortable with that? Um, do we want to schedule work sessions in with this or do we kind of play that by ear? Like what we're thinking about?
We can play that by ear. Uh, the incentive of work session will be for no action to take place.
Right.
So if we don't place them necessarily on the calendar, they become special meetings. And so you still have to stick to the agenda that no work session will be intended to make motions.
For everyone's schedule, just open discussion, would you like to schedule work sessions when we approve this or would you like to play it by ear?
Oh, we can't. I just don't say it specifically on the agenda and this is a special meeting. It just says on the topic meeting dates. That covers, for that cover of special meetings or cover work sessions at all?
I think so, because it just says meeting.
If you include the work session on here, it becomes part of the organizational department. It's a regular meeting, which, which then gives you the flexibility to add more things to the agenda. Uh, my intent there was a work session is just the time for us to come together, ask questions, get more information, focus on academics and what's going on in the districts and in the buildings. Uh, it might be an opportunity for Ms. Ellis or students or, you know, just, you get to learn more about, about the districts and the inner workings of the districts through a work session. We can be a little bit more dynamic. I've got some ideas on how we could interact with leadership teams instead of, you know, in such a formal setting through a work session. And you can still have those if you choose to do them as we go and they'll just become a special meeting. And so we'll, they'll just be more strict on, on the agenda. And I'm fine either way, it could be intended just to showcase things for you to get input, you to have opportunities to interact again with filming leaders during the sessions.
I would rather.
The way.
And I love the work session yard before we scheduled that session. So like in a regular meeting, January, schedule a work session.
Or seven.
Then.
This is going to be a special call meeting.
Yeah. Okay. I just like the idea that you all, like the idea of having work sessions.
No, I think we need to stay.
I just want to know what they would be before.
Right, we could schedule it and.
Yeah, and I can get your input too on things that you're interested in so that we can make sure that we can showcase those appropriately with the different departments.
Um, maybe I want to, um, suggest a motion. Make a motion that we, um, have our monthly meetings at 6:30 here at Central Office on the fourth Tuesday. With the exception of the one in December.
Ashley, can you do that?
Yeah.
Are you going to give the date of the one in December?
Um, let's see, it's, I'm here, December 13.
Well, I don't want to, I, we're going to, I don't want you to have to make that decision, I guess, outside. So if like, it's going to put you in a bind.
To switch to.
To switch from Monday to Tuesday, then.
I didn't know if there was other things on that. I thought it was an arbitrary day. So Mondays are fine with us. I would just find it convenient.
But I was going to. Here we go, request a change from Tuesday.
I.
Fill up all here.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, Monday. I didn't know this, I'm sorry.
And, um, welcome.
I've been through Mondays, Tuesdays, back to Monday, back to Tuesday.
Yeah, like you said, some of it's a third day.
Second, Monday of the month, we went to a third Monday and then we were.
Yeah, I never started as a holiday today. You're like, the number, Monday and Tuesday. Whatever's the most significant for you. And I didn't, none of these.
Okay, we discussed the way I was thinking.
Um.
Make a motion. Okay. Um, I'll make my motion. I think that our monthly meetings at 6:30 here at Central Office on the fourth Tuesday of every month with the exception of December. And that would be on December 13.
Any work session? All those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Eight, board focus, what can I tell it to revision, revision of goals? Dr. McCollum, is this your?
Hey, um, so if it's okay, I can go ahead and run through the rest of these two stuff. Thank you for all. Okay. Well, I first started our base team and not through discussions with a couple of our principals. Uh, Cardinal actually has a really good mission vision and goals. So I thought, um, I don't want to say our, our problem, but we really need to reflect and live what we have. And so that's, that's my mission. Uh, we have one community, one vision of being life ready for every student matters. And I'm, I'm ready for us to really start living that vision. We also have a mission where we join with our community and hopefully we are working there intentionally and trying to make sure that that is a reality for us. So we join with our community to address the individual needs of students in a safe and environment so that they're prepared for college careers at night. Um, again, I don't see any change that we need to make. Um, you know, people go through rebranding when they get new superintendents and new boards and I feel like a lot of that is sort of common circumstance and what we have works. And we really just need to start reflecting that more in our schools, um, here at Central Office, within our board, within our community. So I'm excited about this. And the only thing that we did do is that we filled a little bit of white space and put a cardinal head on the image if you want to look at that. So if you don't have any suggestions to that or you don't have anything pressing that you want to discuss, um, I feel like we need to keep, we need to keep that. Okay.
Okay, um, do you want to go to board powers and duties, which is all that we need to discuss?
Yeah, these are things that honestly we just.
Before we do that, we can go over the goals. What is it, um, state, vision, mission, goals?
Yeah, sorry, 8A. That was on, um, so these are the ones that we do need to be, this could be part of our work session. But these are things that we're working on through our base team, um, for revision. Because these were established in 2015, 2016. So here, I'd like permission to revise our goals that are going to be more aligned with supporting the mission and the vision. And that's going to be through our Cardinal League PLC, so strong focus on academics, our community, the seven standards are the standards that you'll be using to help the value they need. So those things will be reflected into the goals.
You've been asking, well, I've been asking for three years to review the update. So, um, when would you have these updated? Because, you know, seven year old knows probably, you know, we don't.
Yeah. Um, well, we'll have, we could probably have it by May, you know, so part of, part of them are already kind of in process even though they're not, you know, living on this document right now. Some of that's even going to be through like some surveys that you all will be participating in. Um, going to start with some of the school round tables that we'll be doing that I've talked to you all about. And then giving again more of that information back from our principal. Like an NTSS system is something that we're looking at where you're going beyond RTI and you're going beyond behavior interventions. So that's something that's going to be on here again, reflecting the partnerships, things we've seen to work with in our community for, say, whole BCTC, dual credit, um, more certifications. Uh, we've already been working with MSU to increase dual credit opportunities. So a lot of those, and not just kids going to college for, for a four-year degree, but students getting what are actually engaged with their workforce while they're also entering industry certifications or graduating with more opportunities than, than goes beyond a high school diploma. So that some of those things should be reflected within our goals. Obviously, being consistently sound within the district, um, some of that wage comparability work that we're, that we're already currently working on should go in there. Um, and just looking at our overall organizational structure. But I will be creating ways to get input from you all so that we aren't necessarily doing it in active meetings, but it becomes kind of a very organic process. Um, but these are things that, like the TEL survey is already out there and we do impact surveys now. So we've just got some of that finished, I think, in, it may have been December 17th. So like that data will be coming back to us, so we're going to be looking at that. And that's a reflection of what our staff perceives our district to do, leadership to be like. So some of that information is going to help track, um, some of these goals. Nice, thank you.
Out of the board power and duties and all that, that's all you know.
So do I have permission to?
We're working on.
You don't, you don't, that's everybody.
We love this one.
Yes, okay, great.
We need to choose to read them or say, you know, he's really much on this person. You don't have to.
I was getting to ask if you guys want to have that kind of story, but. I assume that we can all read. Um, and you prefer I'm not. So if anybody read them and has any questions, now is the time to speak. Um, other than that, please read. If you have any, if you have any questions, um, Ms. McWilliams or Dr. McCollum are viable answers. Um, Governor of State, American Protection, Kentucky, open meetings and open records laws.
I do have a question.
Uh, on the, um, the Board of Education operating protocol, is this in there? Is it? It's been out a little.
Okay, do you want to say?
My, my favorite.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Everybody just chose to sign it and get it back to us. And then you all came and did it after this was signed.
Oh, right. So we, we signed that last year. Probably.
What's nothing kind of?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
It's a way to sign a folder, but everyone is.
Okay. I just, you know me, I'm old school, I got to put it all.
I put it all. Yes, and those are under best practices through, is there that KSDA?
Yes. Okay.
Anyone have questions? Everybody good?
But I'll see, I'll get my first talk.
I want, you should.
She never saw.
One of them goes, one gets sent off that I don't know if it's here. But I can accomplish the sending one off. But then they.
It happens, it happens. Please say.
Okay. I'm going to assume that everyone has received, um, the Kentucky opening meeting and open records laws, so any questions? Anything related to that other than some?
The seat form.
The same thing.
It's in your documents, all of this.
Yeah.
Has the most recent version of it as well.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that specific document?
No.
Did we send that in? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of my collection of everybody's stamps, so I'll send that around. There's an authority out here in the office and I have another one here. And I'll go ahead and get through you.
Does anybody have one?
Yeah, I think she left this one. Look, the one that's after the two that's taken forward.
I'm printing all my stuff.
Everything, don't leave your printed stuff, you guys.
Everything that I printed, you know, with little stickers.
Yeah, I can tear that into here.
That's what she, that's what I'll be trying to want from her.
That's what I get sent off.
And what is the certificate distribution?
Is it one good, our feeling is good, you got it.
I love my. We weren't long last year.
No good.
It was India.
So we need to pay in at the time.
Yeah, that's why I don't print it or anything.
You have to come in at the time.
You signed it.
Yes.
Our lane, I sure we signed it.
I thought I was losing my mind.
Everyone does have a need, this one.
Maybe.
Sure. Okay. And then does everyone have one of these two missing potentially all the time? Or is this one?
Are you going to surrender?
Um, number nine, student support services, consider approval of wide area network, WI and fiber lease agreements. Mr. Banksen?
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, the timeline's kind of a very specific on fiber, fiber bids, um, and the whole documents and contracts that go along with it. So that's why I requested to have it on a special meeting. Hopefully it won't take up too much of your time. Um, what this is, is every three or five years, depending on the contract, our wide area network fiber lease ends. And so we have to renew with either the same lease or a new one. And so I have to bid out an RFP, I'll get bids back. Um, this year we had three vendors return bids and I asked for varying timeframes of the contract, one year, three year, five year, um, and then various amounts of bandwidth at each, um, at each length of term. at each, um, at each length of term. Um, and so you, I, I think I had Ms. Nance put in, um, in your private drive, all the different contracts, uh, there was some wording in there where some of the vendors didn't want the, you know, everything made public because it's some proprietary information, but, uh, in the public drive was my matrix, my scoring matrix, me and my committee, um, what we decided on and who we gave the highest ranking to, so, uh, what a WAN is, just for background knowledge, it stands for wide area network, it's the internet, um, that goes among all of our schools, right? And so it's not the internet that leaves our core at the junior high and goes out to Frankfurt, but it's all the internet that happens in between schools. Um, and so our current, uh, WAN is set to expire, our, our current lease is set to expire on June 30th, so we need to, that's why I bid it out, a new one, and, um, currently our speeds, uh, at every school is one gig, one gigabit bandwidth, with the exception of GRC, which is a 10 gigabit bandwidth line, because we have more teachers, more students, many more, uh, mobile devices are being used there, so that made sense five years ago, uh, to have the GRC line be 10 gig. Um, and all the other schools are one, and currently, um, currently, GRC hits about two gigs of their 10 allotted on a daily basis, and the elementary schools are like, one, one, close to like, one, one and a half gigs on a regular basis, so, um, I didn't want to, it didn't make any sense to, um, the new bid, to even really entertain bids for one gig. I did make that an option, but, um, uh, the price point for three and five gig bandwidth is about the same as it was five years ago for one gig, um, so that's, uh, that's what I'm, make the recommendation, it'll be based on higher bandwidth than what we're currently using, hopefully that makes sense. Um, and I know the numbers on that matrix, uh, the school, the pricey matrix are pretty high, but keep in mind that about 90% of all of our internet costs are reimbursed by E-rate, um, so all, um, there's, I think, 10, let's see, there's 12 buildings that need internet. Um, Campbell and Conkrite aren't a part of this because Campbell is at the core and Conkrite is tied to justice, uh, but the other 10 buildings, um, is who I bid out for, and all of those will receive E-rate reimbursement except for the preschool, because it's an instructional facility that's not K-12. So, um, with that in mind, uh, I'll, I guess I'll entertain any questions you have, or if I can go ahead and make a recommendation, I'm welcome to, to do that too. Okay, so, so here's, uh, it's kind of an odd recommendation, um, until you hear the reasoning behind it. Um, I would like to go, my recommendation is for, uh, for us to go with Spectrum, um, and for their three gig, so if you look at the, again, the one on your private drive, it would be the three gig spectrum bandwidth, um, the middle one at 36 months, so a three year lease, um, at three gigs for all the schools, except for GRC, they would still stay on the 10 gig. And a three gig, really it's an estimation, because what's happening on this bid is GRC gets its own 10 gig line, and the other nine facilities share three, um, 10 gig ports, which tend, roughly divided by three is three and a third, so, so basically, um, GRC gets a 10 gig line, and then, uh, you know, Baker, Central Office, and Shear would share a 10 gig line, so that's roughly divided by three would be, you know, three gigs per school, and like I said, each school only, right now, uses about one to one and a half gig, so, um, it would, um, so it would definitely give us enough bandwidth to continue what we're doing. Uh, the reason I didn't want to select the five year, go with a full five year term, a couple of reasons, one is a three gig, I think, will work really good for us right now, um, but there's the, you know, you just, you can't predict the future, and five years from now, we might be saying, oh, we should have went with, um, we should have rebid for a higher, a higher bandwidth, so, um, in the long run, I did all the calculations, and if we went with the Spectrum three gig for three years, as opposed to the Spectrum three gig at five years, we would pay an extra 7,000 a year after E-rate reimbursement, so I know not 7,000 is anything to sneeze at, but at the same time, I think it's the best option for us. The other reason is, um, A, like I said, uh, we can't, we want to, don't, don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot as far as preparing for the future, uh, secondly, we currently pay about 20, after E-rate reimbursement, we currently pay about $25,000 a year for internet for the one gigs, and this cost after reimbursement would be 20, um, would be like, uh, 24,000, so we actually save $1,000 a year by going up, by doing a three gig at three years. So what I'm trying to say is, our budget wouldn't change for internet, but we would be getting three times the speed and more lines and newer lines, and, um, also, this, this bid I put out, currently our internet lines, uh, there's a line that goes from Baker to here and goes from Baker to Transportation, so if fiber's ever cut, um, by somebody digging or whatever, and Baker goes down, the internet here also goes down, you probably experienced that, um, those of you that have worked at Central Office before, if Baker's down, this is down, the bus garage is down, and that's bad, especially if we're getting close to, like, uh, when it's time for buses to, to go in and out, so, um, this new plan also gives the bus garage its own line, Central Office its own line, so, um, and then lastly, I would like to go to three years instead of five, because, um, we just, we never worked with Spectrum before, obviously, I know it's a very widely known, excuse me, uh, corporation, and, I mean, it's not like some fly-by-night thing that nobody's heard of before, but at the same time, I'd rather start with a three year, um, three year contract with them instead of starting out with a five year contract. So my recommendation is, is Spectrum, three gigs at a contract for 36 months.
So can you go back, so we're talking about three, uh, three gig for all the elementary schools?
Mm-hmm.
And you go back to the 10 gig, the 10 gig is gonna be shared among three, uh, facilities? Is that correct?
Correct, yes, so there's, yeah, so GRC has its own 10 gig connection, and then there'll be three, three buildings that share a 10 gig, and then another three buildings that share a 10 gig, and then another three buildings that share a 10 gig.
So we've got three 10 gigs?
Yep, and then a fourth 10 gig just for GRC.
Okay, I was thinking it was a three.
Yeah, so that holds.
Yeah, it's, I apologize, I'm probably not explaining it the best, but it's, some of it becomes kind of muddled sometimes, when you talk about gigabits and bandwidth.
Will Spectrum reuse the fiber, is that AT&amp;T fiber, is that from new fiber? What's, how they gonna bring it into buildings, or is the fiber already exist?
Um, they have mostly the existing fiber, um, their own install costs, they're not charging us for any sort of install costs, like, they, they want to get in and get our business and get in, so they'll, they've made it clear, both in their contract and verbally when I did a follow-up call for some explanations, they made it clear that there would be no, uh, install costs at all, they would take care of all that.
Now, will we take that installation from the tag?
Um, I believe since.
Is there a switch up or?
Yeah, there'll be some installation from, like, the last pole into the buildings, um, but they all but assured me that, um, it would be ready before the July 1 date, uh, particularly if we got all the contracts, so that once you all approve it, then I have to have Dr. McComas and some other administrators sign some things, get that approved, um, because it's a KDE lease, over $100,000, I have to get that approved by KDE, um, but all of that, according to my timeline, should have no problem getting done, um, four months before the start date, and that's what they said was their, um, you know, at the very earliest, they would have no problem with.
And so what was the price difference again, from where we are, where do you want to go?
Um, well, currently, we end up paying, after all reimbursements, about $25,000 a year, we've done that for the last five years, and 20, it's actually 25 dollars, 25 thousand dollars, and 25,063 dollars, and, um, this new plan, we would pay 24,960 dollars, so it's actually a decrease of a hundred dollars or so.
When this is going to two gig?
Yeah, yes, yep, yep.
Does, does he have to provide the, um, period of backup, so if I'm having to spectrum, like, I mean, come back, I'm looking back to your, this is, if you got a person before, should we look at having an AT&amp;T circuit here that's based on spectrum, I'm having to spectrum, or?
Um.
And I'm just on that out of.
I'm not even sure if AT&amp;T would agree to that. I'm not sure that AT&amp;T would agree.
Oh, would they agree to that?
I'm, I'm just speaking anecdotally, I don't think that they would.
Well, they probably priced it without, they told Wayne, right?
AT&amp;T?
Yeah.
Yeah, AT&amp;T's price was for, was a five year contract only, um, and their price point at all the gigabit increments was significantly higher. I feel confident in Spectrum's ability, and, um, the person I spoke to, the reference that I called today, um, spoke very glowingly of Spectrum, it's, it's a county that's very close by us.
Close to the say.
Yep, yep, same regional area, only a county or two away.
Mr. I can also ask that all of our leases, um, first of all, ATD didn't provide a contract, they just said, if the proposal that said it will be provided, so we don't know what the terms and conditions are, so. I had some complaints about the Excelocom contract, because it didn't include any more entities, so it was not a non-appropriation clause. Um, Spectrum did provide a contract, but they provided pages and pages of terms, and then if you go to their website, there's like 120 page document of additional terms of service, some of which is pretty much watered plate stuff. Um, we always advise boards to be cautious when entering into multi-year contracts, because, um, you know, you, this board doesn't want to tie the award five years from now, but because of pricing, it's necessary. The thing I, I liked about Spectrum's proposal is that it contained a really clear non-appropriation clause, which is what we always write in, in multi-year contracts, so we would say, make sure the board votes not to appropriate any money for this Spectrum contract, give you an out, so we're not tying up future awards. So, that's on page 23 of the Spectrum proposal. So, some of the other things, some of the other contracts had some other language, but basically, if the board's not appropriated, then they would be due the entire contract at the end.
That should be a law layer, I don't know.
I mean, I, I was happy with our language with that, because always something we look for in multi-year contracts with public entities.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy, for looking over that, all those contracts for me.
Well, I, I will say, I, I looked over what Spectrum submitted, 120 pages online, uh, it's boilerplate. Um, you know, the board may want to vote to, um, condition any approval on final contract, because they haven't sent an actual contract, just that they're probably lost in it, so there might be some language in the final contract, but that's how we negotiate. Would you be down there?
Mm-hmm, contention of one contract.
Is this insensitive? It's, you said, sorry, 3,000, 3,000, 4,000.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty time sensitive, I initially had it on the December agenda, um, but when the December 20th meeting, I moved to December 13th, um, that didn't give the bidders 28 days to bid on it, so that's why I'm presenting it today, so, I mean, it's relatively time sensitive, I'm, I mean, I'm not gonna, like, put it off or anything, so as soon as I get your appro, approval, the next thing would be to.
Spectrum's done the contract, you're bound to do it, and you're top one.
Right.
Dog or ten?
It's interesting how Spectrum gave you, um, choices, like 12 months, 36, and 60, and the other two only gave you about a year.
Yeah, it must not be something that those other two companies regularly do, so I wrote that into my RFPs, is provide, I just gave them some options, say, if possible, provide what you can, so I didn't make any specific timeframes that they had to have. From what I can remember.
Any additional questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Spectrum contract 36 months, based upon approval of, uh, contract, uh, for.
Three gig, 36 months?
I'm sorry.
Three gig, 36 months.
Three gig, 36 months, and, and then 10 gig, 36 months for, for the four locations.
Okay, we have a motion, and second, additional discussion, held in favor. Um, opposed, motion theory is passed.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know, but yeah, adjourn the closed session, um, for disciplinary hearing for HRS 61 dot 810, discussion or hearings in which might leave the point of discipline or dismissal of an individual employee member or student.
I'll make.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Motion three is five zero, we are in closed session, it's a matter of time.
I was gonna see the whole course question.